First approval minute. The minutes of July eighth, June twenty sixth, and July eighth. Executive session.
Yeah, I move that we approved all three sets of events as written. Want to see one of them? You'll hang on the last one?
It's okay, yes.
Your second application?
Favor.
I.
My there's a new committee appointments, but we still not have received the list from down office. Have to get out. Update on host community agreement for Daniel Till, Farm Plainfield LLC at twenty seven room. Ready, Judy?
Uh, I'm ready for it. We got his application.
Yeah.
It was very complete, in my opinion. I think the only thing we need to do tonight is discuss how we're going to score the different rubric sections. And to that end. I brought. Three copies. I can both give you the agreement rubric with the competitive weighting that we did last special. One, yeah, I guess it was, there's three more times, whatever. So. So, um. We might talk this down. Um, kind of this business. African has a complete business plan, management and operations team. Sorry Jenny, what is your role in that? Okay, I'm trying to remember the LLC name.
Farm Plainfield.
Farm Plainfield LLC, I remember that.
So I'll be assisting Daniel with his, uh, rollout of his managerial operations he's gonna be doing.
Okay, they'll be permanent boots on the ground.
Good to know, and you're gonna be, um, you've been working with him in this?
Um, I've been up there to visit some of the operation.
But you're local?
Uh, I will be in, uh, by March. Yeah, I'm in, uh, North Carolina.
Oh.
Jimmy, I don't have.
Oh, it's Scudlow, it's S C Z U D L O.
I spelled it in a tricky way just to make it easy.
That's right, goes Polish with a silent Z's.
Um, so anyway, uh, yeah, good is a complete business plan and a management and operations team demonstrate prior experience in commercial cannabis ventures or other relevant experience and relevant feels. Anybody want to throw out a first bid for what, how many points we award of the twelve available?
Those applications, oh, it's fulfilled all.
Yeah, I would say twelve, okay, we're in agreement there. Um, diversion prevention, the applicant has a plan for preventing divergent, diversion and forbidden access to individuals under the age of twenty-one or under the age of eighteen to medical patients. I mean, uh, we have an relatively small weighting, but I thought that it absolutely did that, so I did a two. Energy and environmental, the applicant has a plan to be energy efficient and recycle where possible. The applicant will need to exceed their default in those, uh, energy regulations and standards. I think that was fully met. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Okay, stream if you're not.
I will.
Now, any bonus to?
Tech.
So, uh. Minutes, the scored rubric, so. Um, consumer education, the applicant has provided adequate consumer education materials or safe belt and materials before commencing operations. I, yeah, that one was also only two, so. Security, yeah, good security claim clearly demonstrates that it needs professional standards was prepared by qualified, by a qualified professional and has been reviewed by the local police and local fire departments, yes. The plan includes an operational security plan, including but not limited to general security for visitor access and inventory control, employment, training and general security policy policies.
Absolutely, you need all that.
Yeah.
Um, I, I would wanna jump in here and commend you on, on the, uh, uh, you can shoot it directly to Chief Bushfield and, uh, Chief Sheer. Um. Uh, I'm aware that, that Chief Sheer asked for more detail and he's providing it, it was a real nice change there.
Yes, thank you.
And then you'll be meeting with each of them as the time they's obviously.
You need walkthroughs.
Excellent.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna attend. Local involvement and physics integration, yeah, can just demonstrate the plan to positively impact the local community to implement decent control measures and be a good business neighbor. The applicant has a plan consistent with applicable laws and regulations to make good faith efforts to hire municipal residents for employment, supplier services, indoor vendor services. Yeah, that has provided its mechanisms for responding to future feedback from community members.
I think you need all that.
Yeah, agree.
Daniel, will you be looking again at your, um, proposed station? Um. You have a pay scale seventeen to thirty-five dollars a hour. Um, I noticed that living wage, um, charts show that, um, the living wage in Franklin County or Versher County runs between twenty-three dollars and forty-six. Depending on how many people are in fact, of course.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm willing to pay a fair wage, our wages out in Michigan are a little bit different, but I, I have seen that Massachusetts has one of the highest costs of living out of county states, I'm completely understandable, I'm willing to pay what, you know, a fair wage, so I would agree.
Yeah, that's what I said too. So, are you okay if we give it fifteen?
Yes.
All right. Location and traffic management, this one makes me laugh. Traffic management on a dead end street. The applicant has proposed, a proposed location that is appropriate leased out under kind of theme special permit. Post-location of establishment has acceptable parking indoor public transportation, uh, you know, public transportation here, sorry, for customers and employees. The applicant. Excuse me. The applicant's proposed location has business hours in line with local ordinances and a nuisance abatement plan. The applicant has a plan to keep parking area exterior and interior well maintained. Yeah, I said five. Um. The applicant shows a reasonable post timeline for commencing operations, including but not limited to permitting licensing from the commission inspections and construction. And he gave that one a really low weighting because I sort of thought, hey, it's your timeline, it's your money, because it's not our problem really, but, um, yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Assuming the commission is expeditious in their approval of your license.
Yes.
Compliance, the applicant demonstrates an understanding of local laws, state laws and federal laws concerning cannabis. The applicant demonstrates a willingness to work with local law enforcement where necessary. The applicant demonstrates ability to comply with commission regulations. I would absolutely give it a seven point five.
Yes.
Which is the maximum. Labor and employment, applicant has described a plan for hiring local vendors and employees. The applicant will provide benefits to employees such as healthcare, vacation and medical leave to the free there offered as part of employment. I think that's been answered, so that's a ten. So, and number, the last item on the rubric, which is, again, just so everyone in the room knows, this is a rubric that is mandated by the, uh, Cannabis Commission of Massachusetts. And what we were able to edit was how much weight we gave to each consideration, except for this last one. This last one is mandated to be twenty-five points. And that's the equity mandate. Uh, applicants meeting one or more of the criteria listed below will be awarded full points for this section as required by nine three five C M R five hundred dot one eight one and three parent C. And nine three five C N R five oh one dot one eight one parent three parent C. That seems redundant, okay. Uh, the applicant is pre-verified or verified as a social equity business pursuant to. I'm not gonna read the whole thing because we know that you're not. So you don't get any of those twenty-five points. It's, it's basically to ensure that, uh, any minority businesses, people who were, uh, disproportionately affected by previous cannabis laws or incarceration or whatever, um, get preference. And that doesn't apply here. So, the total points that are awarded are seventy-five. The minimum required for consideration is sixty. So obviously, we will now enter into, um, the host community agreement itself, negotiations, again, most of which is not negotiable by the state. But, um, I think, I think the next steps, if this is acceptable to you, would be that between now and September ninth, our next meeting, um, we circulate a host community agreement to the three of us and you and lawyers, if you want, and we can make it that. We have a proposed host community agreement that our, um, lawyers have provided. And, um, I have not edited it closely yet at this point, but I thought we needed to get to this stage before we do that. And within the next two weeks, we'll distribute a copy of that. And we'll talk, at our next meeting, we will talk about any edits we wanna make to it. You can bring ideas forward. And I think that's how we, that's our next step. And hopefully, we can get that done in two weeks. Does that work for you?
That would be great.
Good, thank you.
Rezoing, okay.
It's really nice to see you guys.
Yes.
Well, we're gonna try to make it to a restroom before it closes.
Oh, um, please have some dinner.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you.
While locating town count discussion of Hampshire County group insurance trust twenty percent rate increase effective October first, twenty twenty-five.
I just want to report to the board, um, that while, um, other communities are, um, having to work on probably increased funds for the twenty percent, but our budget will sustain it as long as there aren't a lot of changes within the policies throughout the year. And as you know, the town gives seventy-five percent of an employee's premium, so, uh, I, I think we're gonna match it. For the show.
Sounds good.
Through Paul's magic.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions?
Is anyone from the finance committee here? I don't see Bob Day, oh, Roberto.
Can we, I believe.
Or Delilah, great. Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure that the finance committee heard that.
Select board to vote on approval of special town meeting warrant.
Can we put that a little later? I haven't read it yet. Because I don't, I didn't get a copy of that, I know, did you?
Ready?
Oh. No, no. Okay, why don't we put that at the end and I'll read it and we can sign it? I mean, does anybody want us to read the warrants and discuss them first? Since they're probably, they probably can't be changed at this point.
No.
I mean, I'd love to just know what they are, but I don't mean.
Well, I can tell you what the topics are. Um, article one is to see if the town will vote to transfer the ownership of a previously donated by the Hampshire County Fire Defense Association and now a surplus nineteen eighty-eight GMC van to the Plainfield Volunteer Firefighters Association or take any action relative there too. That was brought forward by, uh, Rob Shearer, oh, hi Rob, a while ago. And, um, in order to be able to sell the truck, we had to transfer it to the volunteer, the Plainfield Volunteer Firefighters Association. And then article two is to see if the town will vote to transfer the amount of one thousand dollars from the stabilization account to the recreation committee, FY twenty-six appropriation, so they're increasing their budget by a thousand dollars, recover the insurance deductible that was filed for damages to the back south baseball field or take any action relative there too, because our insurance firm, our insurance company, um, has a thousand dollar deductible that they were unaware of at the time that we created their budget earlier. And so this is to make them hold for the year so they can do all the other things they have scheduled. Did I get that right, Sandy?
Correct. It's not increasing our budget, it's only.
No, it's not increasing it.
It's like equalizing it out.
Yeah, because you had to pay a thousand dollars that you didn't know you were gonna have to pay when you submitted your budget. So those are the two warrants. Okay. Well, we just have to sign these. Well, no, first we have to vote on. I move that we accept warrants as written. Since I just read them. I'm set back.
Own favor.
Fine. All right, we'll sign these a little late.
That's got us.
Yeah, we got a lot of stuffs.
Hold on. A letter from Asheville Select Board regarding potential shared emergency services.
So, Rob Shearer, I think forwarded that to us and, um.
I got. Ash's, did you?
I don't think I did.
It's been being talked about for a long time, a long time, I got, I still have your guys' uh, study about regionalization, uh, David let me borrow it and I read it. But after, after reading that, I mean, it doesn't really work for fire, but police, we are in charge of it, it don't work for us, as my opinion, we don't wanna pay some other town for stuff we don't get. There's a lot of cons and some pros and, I don't know. Probably want to talk about any of it or?
Yeah, so the letter, uh, the letter kind of alluded to, not alluded to, but directly came out, then, uh, correlated, uh, their Ashfields interest in, uh, the Highland ambulance model as a model for emergency services kind of as a whole. Um, so I have a couple of concerns about that, now, just as some background, I'm on the board of directors for Highland, uh, I was part of the initial group that, uh, started Highland. Highland is an incredible success for our area. Uh, it works amazingly well and in the current climate and, and when we got it started, uh, it was about the only option for EMS. But I think the oversight on Ashfield's heart, um, in my opinion, is to think that EMS is the same as fire. So, um, ninety percent of emergency medical scenes, one ambulance and a crew of two can manage that situation. Probably more than ninety of those incidents. For fire scenes, that's not the case. For a fire scene in a rural setting, you're looking at, uh, a minimum of eight apparatus. You have to remember that the cities don't have to come up with quite that many because they have pressurized, uh, pressurized hydrants. Right, so we need a minimum of four tankers doing what we call a tanker shuttle, um, bringing water to the sea. Obviously, Plainfield doesn't have four tankers. Um, so, in a sense, we're already regionalized. We're regionalized in a way where we share our apparatus, we share our equipment and we share our volunteers. So, to say, to, to think that we could kind of follow that same Highland ambulance model in the fire service, uh, I think is a pretty significant oversight. My other concern, um, is, again, Highland ambulance has been a, a great success, but uh, as a result of Highland ambulance, um, can anybody guess how many volunteers Highland ambulance has right now?
Zero.
Zero. Zero volunteers, right? Now, when we first started Highland ambulance, we were all volunteers and we slowly over time had a paid crew. Uh, I spent many, many nights going up to Highland ambulance. It was at the Ocean Fire Station at the time, spending, sleeping up there because that was the centralized station, it was, it was, you know, I was offering my services for free. I was not paid. Um, and that was how we ran it. The problem was, you start to lose your volunteer interest. Most volunteers have, in my experience, have a dedication to about a few square miles, right? Volunteers wanna volunteer to give back to their town, to their community, to their neighbors, the people they live next to. Uh, they don't so much want to volunteer to go to the far side of Ashfield, to go to the far side of Williamsburg. Uh, and if you have a fire radio, you know, I mean, it is all day long, these calls are going out. So, my concern is, if we were to regionalize a fire service, we would lose all of our volunteers, just like Highland did. Now, the only reason that Highland ambulance is as successful as it is is because of the volunteers currently on the fire departments that go out to the calls, go out to the scene and package and manage and start treatment while they're waiting for the ambulance to show up. If we don't have fire volunteers, EMS falls apart. If we don't have fire volunteers, you can't get those six to eight to ten apparatus plus the twenty-five or so uh, personnel that you need for a structured fire on scene. So I have a lot of concerns about the idea. Now, the study that was done four years ago, um, there was a grant that was secured for this study, uh, and it included Plainfield and surrounding towns. They were very surprised to see that we were doing so well. But they did offer some, uh, suggestions of how we can do better. So, uh, suggestions such as, um, having automatic mutual aid. So we now have, and we have for quite some time, um, automatic mutual aid. If Plainfield gets a call for a structure fire, if your house is on fire, Covington and Goshen and Ashfield are already coming to help. So, again, in a sense, we're already regionalized. Um, and then the final thing that I'll say is, you know, you have to look at what's, uh, so, so Ashfield's in a little bit of a tough spot right now. They need a new fire station, their station is crumbling and their apparatus doesn't fit. They have one good fire engine and their tanker is getting older, their other pumper is getting older. Um, they're struggling with volunteers, as many of us do, um, although Plainfield is, is still holding pretty strong at, at, uh, thirteen or so volunteers. Um, they're looking for somebody who can solve a lot of their big problems, right?
Yes.
Really, I mean, and, and I think it would be a very hard sell for the taxpayers of Plainfield who have supported Plainfield fire very, very well for many, many years, which is why we have a beautiful station. We have really great up-to-date apparatus and equipment to protect the town of Plainfield. It would be a difficult sell, I think, in my mind to say, all right, Plainfield taxpayers, you have really supported the fire department, thank you. But now your taxpayer dollars and all that equipment is gonna go to support these other towns who didn't plan quite so financially well.
I agree.
That's my.
Thank you.
But I'm happy to take questions if anybody has any.
I, I can wait till.
Okay, I, I should say, so from what you said, Rob, it sounds to me like we, Plainfield, are already regionalized in most of the significant aspects of what that means. Except that we're not paying the other towns for the mutual aid part of it. But we do pay Highland ambulance for their services.
Yep.
But, and I'm not sure what it would really mean for the police, I think there are some implications there too.
Yeah, I'm certainly not an expert on, on policing, um, so I, I can't really speak to that. Uh, my gut tells me that there's some similarities between EMS and policing, especially since, you know, most incidents, police incidents can probably be managed with one or two
Yeah.
cruisers and brutes, right? I, I'm generalizing, but that's not always the case.
Well, I think, what I, what I think is, 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 uh, so does the, does the proposal that we received from Asheville suggest or require that Asheville be the manager or the hub of all the services?
No, in fact, I think they don't want that. I think they are looking for, um, a place that's better suited, that's got equipment and housing, um.
Like Plain.
Like Plainfield.
I'm not sure.
Um, I, I also think it's important to know that, you know, they suggested a full-time crew.
Yeah.
Um, and that's expensive. They also said it's paid staff. Um, that's expensive. Uh, they said in the letter, this won't be cheaper. They were quite clear on that, this won't be cheap. Um, the average firefighter in Massachusetts makes ninety thousand dollars a year. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Fire chief, full-time fire chief, you're looking at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, as emergency services go, and, and I've been in it my entire life, emergency services doesn't run nine to five.
Yeah.
You need a crew, seven days a week, twenty-four hours, four hours a day.
Yeah.
And you need a minimum of two firefighters, technically three for an engine crew on a, on a apparatus, so if you had to pay three firefighters, it's expensive.
Mm-hmm.
What we're doing is not great, it may not be sustainable forever. So what we're doing is working.
So, what is the advantage to Plainfield, if any, to going in on this regionalization plan that they're proposing?
I mean, if you got extra money.
Uh, you know, we could, we could use a little more money.
Uh, there, there really isn't a great advantage for us because we are doing well. We have, uh, very good relationships with all of the towns. I meet with the Hilltown Fire Chiefs, uh, once a month. Um, we are, we have a text group, we collaborate every single day. As calls are going out, as things are happening, um, we are in constant communication with each other and how we can help each other.
Mm-hmm.
That aspect is relatively new, um, for our area. We used to kind of just silo ourselves and we'll call if we need anything. Uh, that's, that's changed.
Cool.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Delilah was nice, yeah. Um, I, I really appreciate the overview that you gave, all of those concerns make sense to me. Um, and I actually think that I have, uh, similar concerns across all the different, um, both police and fire. I do have strong concern about losing local control. Even if we were the hub, that does not mean that we get to make all the decisions. We then enter in agreements with other towns. We have a tough enough time making decisions for ourselves, um, I just wanna put that in there. I do think regionalization can work. I've seen it be really successful with like some of the work around the internet and, um, I think mutual aid is successful. But I also think we have some things that we really need to get clarity on and understand on here before we give up control of our decision-making around, um, uh, some, um, uh, emergency services. Um, I also think, you know, being the manager of a hub, uh, can mean a lot of emergency traffic leaving out of here. Sure, we have the building for it, but do we want all of it?
Well, I don't think everything would be necessarily located here, would it, Rob?
No.
Not necessarily, it could be Goshen.
Yeah.
It could be Covington.
And probably different places depending on the location of the emergency.
I still have a concern of our own control of our.
I think the coordination of that is tricky.
Yeah.
And then I do have a question about how many towns Ashfield sent us to? Who else did they send it to other than Ponyfield?
I believe it was all of the member towns of Highland. Believe it was all of the member towns of Highland Ambulance, I could be wrong.
And also probably Buckland and Shelburne.
Asheville, Plainfield, Covington.
Oh, that's Highland.
That's what they sent the letter to all of them.
Okay, I think they've all, I also think their town administrator. Oh, my class chief has reached out to Butler County Shelburne about the fire. Regionalization in particular.
Yeah, that would make sense.
That was reported in the Asheville news. And there's a lot of meetings meeting that, so. He was instructed to reach out to them. And they're larger.
Oh. Oh, loving words around, I just, I'm wondering if any of the others firefighters in the other towns have paid. Or is already all volunteer?
Right now, all of the firefighters are volunteers. Uh Asheville has a full-time paid chief. And Williamsburg has a full-time paid chief. The rest of the towns are very similar to us in the in that they have like a stipend.
So in a regionalization of everything, that would be a significant thing, wouldn't it?
Well, potentially, uh and and it would depend on. What the regional agreement was, whether you've got a district chief and then you've got. Uh. You know, multiple chiefs kind of under that district chief that if.
Any other questions?
Do we have to make a decision tonight?
No, I think the the letter was gauging interest in.
It's well, there's a good discussion going about it.
The the study that was done four years ago, uh we will. Be happy to make that available to anybody that wants to read it. It really has some great uh conclusions and suggestions. Um so. It's about a hundred pages long. So I didn't wanna print up too many of them. Um I think we can, yes, yeah, I think we can.
I mean, Asheville reached out to me, uh probably last winter sometime about police regionalization and. I don't know, Plainfield's support their poor decisions, but. Oh, here we are. So.
I have a comment, just a generalized comment, I'm Kimberly Longing from fifty-three South Union. So the regionalization question has been swirling around. For twenty years. As we've all been watching the budgets go. Up and up and the constraints of proposition to have on how much we can levy on the task base. I'm only of Highland values and a positive example of regionalization, like absent schools and. Professional services. Emergency services, I'm only aware of Highland being successful. And there are two instances in Massachusetts where regionalizing small rural police departments. Are still in their mid-phase of proofing. Reportedly successful, but you know, early in. I think it would be good for this board and or the board plus the finance committee to. Have a working session about. How far we are interested in exploring this model. And and what benchmarks would we want to see to actively pursue? Because if we're not gonna pursue regionalization, I think we have to pursue something else. To give relief to the cost of the ever-increasing cost of running big. Increasingly professionalized emergency services for such a small tax-based town. And that is legislative. That is not nothing more than legislative to give relief. And that takes ten years to put in, it takes ten years to pass reg- legislation. So, but what I'm saying is if we're really saying we're not gonna do this, I think we still have a problem to solve. And that is the direction I would suggest we go.
So. I'm glad you suggested that it be a larger group than just a select board and the finance committee or a select board meeting because I was just. Emailing with Rob Scher today about using the public safety complex for another all committees and all boards meeting. And I think that would be a good topic for that whole group. Because I think um I'm certainly, all of the committee members are invited, but we particularly ask that the. Chairs of those committees come, and those are largely. Leaders in our community who are pretty well informed about their part of the world or. And and many of them have served on many different committees, and that might be a place to put that if you thought of the agenda. And would you agree with that or?
Talking about more than an all boards.
Notion of regionalization, we're not keen on it. Then what is our fallback gonna be? Because there are definite financial constraints with.
That's right.
The way the state has been funding rural communities, but there also might be an opportunity. To lobby with some of the other mechanisms that are fairly newly in place, you know. The Director of Rural Affairs or whatever and these kinds of things to see. How they could help us push forward. Um some kind of support. And we frankly, I think. From the way Rob described it, I think we could actually put ourselves forward. As an example of a hybrid regionalization model that has worked well. At least for us and could theoretically work for other towns. I mean, Goshen can certainly do something like that because. They actually have plenty of money.
Um Delia, I didn't even know that, you know.
Former reassessor. She was the. The finance committee.
Yeah, I know.
She shared the either end or what, they were able to buy a new fire truck. Out of cash, out of a capital capital staple.
Spend it on everything. And go.
Forget it, um that's gonna be brought up anyways.
Good, the Leland Madison on Pleasant Street, thank you Kimberly. Um I think if we do have this conversation as a full group, it'd be great to see the financials. Cause what I did hear is that it wouldn't help us financially, so that was something that caught my ear for sure, so it would be great to understand them.
I I think probably because it was talking about having a district director. Which everybody would have to pay in form.
Right, so.
And then you probably would still have your own fire chief and you could be volunteer or not.
And we could just have the numbers for the conversation for the group, that'd be helpful so that we can. You know, really talk about it. All the.
And do you, do you know, Rob, if if Paul has numbers or what that might look like?
No, I think the letter was really just gauging interest in a conversation.
Okay. Um. Well, we we can ask about that and then if they don't have the numbers, what we could do is we could put the agenda item on the on the. On the agenda to gauge interest. Is it worth us pursuing this so far as to get the numbers, which could well. Not pan out.
I think it's important to understand from. Our perspective from Plainfield where we are doing quite well, we we aren't in need. Uh of equipment. Um. At this present time.
Mm-hmm.
Um. This would be in addition to what we are already doing, you you still need all of the equipment. We don't have extra equipment.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Uh among among the towns, there isn't extra equipment, so you're not gonna be able to offload. Equipment and be like, oh, we don't have to pay for this anymore. You still need the same number of trucks, you still need the same number of volunteers.
Yep.
Um so that piece doesn't really help us any. For a town that is in need. That might help them some.
Right, right, cause it would give them some access to our.
To a station and our equipment.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Oh.
Kimberly, I wondered if it was worth outlining the problems that the other associations have, or did that too?
No, I think my point um on it and select board is, this is the. It this, this comes up. Spikes up two or three times a year. When one or the other of our towns are grappling with. A problem. Sometimes that's financial, sometimes personnel, sometimes it's equipment. It's just a repeat thing. And we repeatedly sort of stall on, are we interested or are we not? And what I'm suggesting is inaction means we're not. And so we should predict that we need to find a different solution. And that is a believe legislative and it always, it's either big level legislative, like Prop two and a half has to go away. And we ought to be able to levy more taxation, everybody's gonna want that. But that is the solution, right? Another solution is something like pilot for open space taxation. Rural towns get some extra money on the cherry sheet because we're all self-financing professional departments on the backs of volunteers. I don't know what it is, but there's legislative vehicles. What I'm just saying is inaction is a decision and we should get clarity. And stop, you know, all of this writing of letters and.
I I was just wondering if the um. Problems of these other ones be uh outside of the Highland hand, it would be instructions.
Oh, I think at the end of the day, it probably all comes down to money.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Most people won't realize that our insurance rates in this town are a little bit less because we have such a great fire. It's true. If we regionalize this, it's gonna jeopardize that.
So it depends on uh yes, potentially. So your insurance is based on how far away your house is from a fire station. If we move our fire station to a regionalized space such as Highland, that's. More than, I can't remember the number, four or five miles, um yes, your insurance will go up significantly.
Meaning, meaning the home, individual home.
Individual home.
And what would it do to our liability insurance or any of that stuff too? I mean, the town insurance.
I'm sure all of this out, but I know, I know for personal um.
Yeah.
Home insurance insurance.
Yeah.
Changes significantly. That was a good point, your question.
Any other questions? Hey, Rob.
Thank you.
So who's gonna get back to finish field? Are you gonna get back to Nashville?
Sure.
Okay. Ask, ask them if they can give us, you know, some estimate of what it would cost.
Yeah. I'll pick your brain. Well, Robert Walton, building commissioner requests to switch from hourly page salary.
Yeah, just wondering if you'd entertain that fact, um. Basically more for retirement perspective. Cause I can't be in the Hampshire County Retirement unless I make a salary. If I'm an appointed official, I make a salary more than five thousand dollars a year. Than I could be in an Hampshire County retirement, otherwise I I'm not. Um. And you're paying me hourly, so. I was thinking, similar to what Goshen paid me, they gave me about ten thousand five hundred to like two hundred dollars a week. And that fits within. The budget that I already have, but fifteen thousand for salary. Well, he's made money, cause I have somebody helping me. Um. So it's really about. Retirement, I mean. And then.
Do we have to match the funds that go into retirement?
No. Well, it's all comes out of my pay, it's eighty-nine percent of.
Yeah.
So it doesn't affect anything really in the budget other than. I'm probably charging you less hourly than I would be salary, but. Then again, I don't really charge if I get a telephone call, cause how do I do that, right? And I mean. So I don't, it's a win maybe for me, maybe a win for you, depends around how busy we are, right? Could go either way.
You know, when that building boom comes to Plainfield, that's gonna be a winner for us.
So that's that that's just the basic idea of it.
Yeah. What do you guys think?
I'm for it.
Yeah.
I am too. So do we need to vote on that? I move that we um convert Robert Walton from, is it Walton or Waldren?
Walden.
Walden, no, ah, okay. Um our building commissioner from an hourly employee to a salaried employee. At a rate of ten thousand.
Ten thousand five hundred, ten thousand four hundred is two hundred dollars a week, but I should have ten thousand five.
Ten thousand, let's say ten thousand five hundred dollars a year.
I'm fine with that.
So I moved that.
I'll send you that.
Come on, favor.
Alright. Done.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on that or? Claude Dupont concerns about the geothermal heat pump installation.
I know, I was supposed to have some statements made up for the select board. Kurt Henshaw. He doesn't put these in. He says they're very, very, very inefficient. He said there's much more efficient ways to create heat. He said they will do some air conditioning in the summer. But if you look at the overall cost of the whole project. He said you could heat this building with oil for many, 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 many years. And there are other things. Down in the eastern part of the state somewhere, there's a big lawsuit going on.
Couple of them.
There's two of them, because some town drilled a well to do geothermal. And it contaminated some other wells within the near area. He said it's over a hundred thousand dollar lawsuit. Do we really want something like that?
So he's gonna get him for many.
He he's gonna get it. He was supposed to have it today. But he's retired, he took his wife and spent the day somewhere, so. Maybe he's trying to set an example for me. But we should really, really research this. We're talking some serious money. That's probably not gonna pay itself back. So he even suggested is inefficient as a, well, dirty vision. Mini splits are much more cost-effective. So. I will get some information, I'm gonna try to get on the computer to research it. And he did say, not all of them don't work. There's few that work. But you're talking to get the proper water, he he said you gotta put on like a thousand, twelve hundred feet. At sixty dollars a foot, that's pretty expensive. So he highly. Does not recommend it. I will try to get some more research for your next meeting, I will have. I'm gonna actually try to get him to talk to you.
Yeah, if you could get it, if you can get us some of his background material beforehand.
Right.
And then maybe he can come to the meeting.
Was supposed to have that today, but he just.
Hey.
Didn't go to work.
You stand.
So we really shouldn't investigate, do some.
Yeah.
Do some research, cause I think we're gonna basically just spend a lot of money for nothing. And I'm pretty sure Plainfield doesn't have a whole lot of money to just spend on something that's not gonna work.
Only pretty sure.
The one you can't even drink the water here, so.
Well, if we're.
But that's where the money should go, to fix fix this place. Make it. Um at least.
And I've done a little research on.
Possible.
Right, now the other thing. Seems is how this is a geothermal well, it might be exempt. A water well is supposed to be a hundred feet from other septixes, how much?
Yeah.
A hundred feet. We've got septix out around here, I mean, unless we put the well right in the middle of the.
It doesn't measure in any direction to.
Right.
Yeah.
But being as how geothermal is not drinking water, it might be exempt. But it's still ungodly cost for what you're gonna get.
I've asked a few facilities, Eagle Brook says theirs works great. Smith Collum says theirs works horrible, they have six hundred million dollars into their. They can't get the building above sixty-two degrees.
Yeah.
And it's warmer down there than it's up here too.
Right.
So it's gonna. And I know when I come in on a uh Monday night, we turn on a furnace. It warms it up in here quick, and you just shut it back down. Um I didn't hear anything that the furnace is no good.
No.
Um no issues with that.
The tank ain't rusty.
No.
There's no, somebody removed the tag-offs.
Yeah.
But we we should really re, I I'm gonna just take some time and do some more research.
Oh, the soldiers homes put one in, I haven't heard any. Feedback on that yet.
Yeah.
There are places they work and there's places. There are places they work and there's places they don't.
Right.
And.
And if we could get, now the other thing he suggested, if we are gonna do this. All the wells within like four, five hundred feet should be tested. Make sure they're clear and then if this goes in and it pollutes them.
Well, somebody will be responsible.
Right. That, he said that was a big thing.
Or if they're already polluted, they can't come back and play much.
Well, that's the other one, right, right. So, but that would be a cost that I think the town should bear.
Or whoever puts, or whoever puts it in.
So whoever's gonna put it in. But it definitely needs more research. It's, it's. It's not cost effective.
Peter?
Yeah, so um we actually received bids for um. The ground source heat pump uh on the eleventh of August. And all of the bids are higher than our budget, so we're asking the select board to reject the bids as they were received. Um, we haven't given up on the idea of the project, but. The low bidder was disqualified because they didn't uh for procedural error, they didn't include a bid bond. So the next low bidder was actually fifty thousand dollars more than what we had estimated the project was gonna cost and there's no way that we can make that work. Uh, within the context of uh our goal, which was to have the simple payback be. Uh, less than ten years in terms of when we get the money back for what we invested. The cost to the town, when we applied for the grant, was gonna be zero. So we weren't gonna be spending money, pound, taxpayer dollars to do this. We had it. A vehicle setup, we're gonna be done with uh grants and rebates and so. Uh. The energy committee met. We're not gonna recommend for going forward at this point. Um, we have to find a way to gap fund the difference between. The, this, this project was. Written up in May of. Twenty four. So it's been over fifteen months since we put our grant application together based upon solid pricing. To when we actually got numbers for what it cost. And so. Uh, and there were some administrative things that were not revealed to us that. We didn't anticipate, such as the cost to file the federal return. So we're on top of it. If we come back to the town with a proposal, it will be one that does not cost the town money. We are also fully aware of all the issues that Claude has brought up. We have equal concerns about those. Uh, there's not the setback requirements uh as there are for. Public water supply versus sanitary, so that's not an issue. But we identified during bid process some real concerns about the, the drilling of the well. And we're addressing those because the last thing you wanna do is be a bad neighbor to our neighbors. So um please have confidence in the energy committee that we are doing our due diligence. We would not recommend something to the town. That was gonna be detrimental and we will not recommend that we spend our tax dollars on something because the furnace is an adequate furnace. The reason for this was to eliminate our dependence on fossil fuels, which is a goal that the state has established. For us to be by twenty fifty, to be carbon neutral, which means that we have to find other ways to energize our buildings.
Well, electricity, cause we just made.
Yes, yeah.
But a lot of it is carbon. And the other piece, the other piece of it is that we have. About four thousand dollars of repairs that we need to do to the ductwork currently. And we have to, we're gonna keep the oil fire, the, we have to repair the shed out back. That's another couple thousand dollars. So we were gonna save the town. About six thousand dollars from having to rebuild and replace stuff with, with this project. So there was. Some savings that we were realizing in the process. So it's a two, two edged thing, but in, in the event, we're at a stalemate at this point. We can't go forward.
Okay.
And I need the town, uh the select board to make a vote to reject the bids as. So that I can then uh officially reject the bids so that we can move on.
I move that we reject the bids.
I'll second that motion.
Call in favor.
Alright. Can we um in the research that's being done, I'd like, I have, I have another question. Is, is there a way? I'm not an energy expert. I'm not an engineer. I don't know any of that stuff. But is there a way that, or is there some expert that we can turn to? Who could tell us what the factors are? That may some geothermal installations successful and functional. And others a failure and non-functional.
I'm, I could talk to Kurt about that. He could come up. He'll get, he'll get. Now, the other point he did bring up, and I forgot to mention that. These pumps run twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. He said almost all, all electric bills triple and some of them quadruple. That's big cost. So. So I, I, I promise you, the next meeting I'll have a lot more information.
Have it on hand for. Okay.
So. And anybody here that knows how to use a computer, I'm not one of them, but it's all on the computer. So we should all do some research and.
So Claude, just, just.
Research projects on my desk right now.
So Claude, just.
For the town.
So the town was gonna save six hundred and ninety three dollars a year in operation costs, but we're, we're gonna pay more for electricity. But we were gonna use less fuel oil and that's the difference. And that's how we're projecting the payback to the town in terms of what our expense was. So if we were gonna spend. Seven thousand two hundred dollars, which is what it was gonna cost us after at, at annual town meeting based upon. Our administrative cost that we didn't know about. Uh, the payback was gonna be ten years. So. Uh. We're not talking about a lot of money. We are talking about a new technology. I understand people's caution about it and we are doing our due diligence to get the information that I need. But it's not a new technology in terms of its use and the. I can't speak to the systems that aren't working, but there obviously is a reason why they're not working.
They were great, nice ones.
Well, they were great here.
Well, I'll worry at the surface.
If they're so great.
A lot of.
We should all put them in.
Well, I am actually designing a lot of houses that use those these days, so it's not, this is not my first geothermal system that I've recommended.
Paulie?
I just wanted to say that personally I got a grant. To put in a um split heat pump system in my home. And to decarbonize my footprint. And um sure, my electric bill went up. But it's way, way less than what it cost me to buy the propane to heat my house. So it did pay off and what is not being considered here is the benefits you get. In terms of our atmosphere. And the ratio of CO two to oxygen. We actually need oxygen, certain percentage in the air. To survive. Right now, CO two is replacing that oxygen. And at some point, it's gonna replace it to the point where we're gonna be extinct. And I know somebody, some people don't believe this science. But that's why you got. Many things across the whole country and the whole earth. Deliberating about how they're gonna reduce CO two in the air. Because it's replacing our oxygen, which we need to survive. And the reason that I drive an electric car is because it doesn't put CO two in the air. It doesn't put anything in the air. And I've actually saved a lot of money by having an electric car. It may be more inconvenient when I go to the gas pump. I can't just fill it up. But I've been able to get everywhere I need to go by just planning a bit about how I'm gonna charge it.
But it's not carbon free. It was used fossil fuels, the building and all that.
It's not carbon.
We don't need to have this argument here.
No, exactly. But it's not factored into the value.
Of all of this, we're only considering what the elec- electric bill is considered to the.
Y'all's gonna think about replacing the heat pumps and like especially on like.
The cost of wood.
The motors.
And having enough atmosphere to survive.
There's plenty of trees and stuff and all of them.
Mr. Chairman, may we please go on with the meeting? Yeah.
On to the next one. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Way back in the sixties. I'd like company. Put a pink logo on lots of houses in Plainfield, all went to electric heat. Cause for three years. After three years, the price went so high, nobody could afford. And most houses flipped them out.
I didn't need the sound.
Electric resistancy, that's the worst possibility you can use.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's why, just, just, just to. Just to tie the thread, just, just to tie the thread back together. The reason why we were doing geothermal. Is because with a, a mini split. When it gets too cold for the mini split to operate, we have to rely on resistance heat.
Right.
Well, geothermal doesn't go through that cycle. So the reason why we are recommending it is so that when it's really cold. And we have a microclimate here that's colder than the rest of the state, that the ground temperature doesn't change. So we can continue to use the more efficient transfer of heat. So the reason was operationally, it was more cost effective and would save us money over a longer period of time.
Thanks, Peter.
I think we can see from the energy uh. Committee's request that we reject. The bits that were overpriced, that they are working very hard on this idea, with heart, for all our benefit. I think the benefit. I don't think we're gonna lose listening to what the energy committee has to say as well as everybody else. But that's due diligence to ask us to.
Yeah, please ask the questions. I, I.
Help this off right now so that they can look more even.
Sandy's question.
Sandy.
I don't have a question. I'd like to make a suggestion, please. And that is the next time that any of this is. Um, I'm not sure just what the process is, but um. If you're asking people to come in and look and see um and before, can we have a meeting where people can meet and ask questions? Not like this, but at a regular energy meeting or whatever, when the time comes.
Sort of like.
Before, before.
Yeah.
Um. Or an informational, we, we have a public hearing. So we don't have to publish or anything, but it's um. But just an informational meeting where people can ask questions and know what is going on.
Yeah.
And, and because this right here is not accomplishing anything.
No.
Yes.
Well, correct. Good suggestion.
Thanks, Sandy. Back to Peter. Update on town offices expansion.
Uh, I don't have an update at this point. I've talked to uh. Chris uh Metcalf, that he hasn't got vaccinated on a timeline for him to get started. But the uh energy, I mean, excuse me, the buildings committee. Uh, voted at our August meeting to pursue the study because we feel like if we. Have the information and can demonstrate how the library will not be impacted and how the town will benefit. And a scenario that makes sense, then it would become more uh. We'd have more beneficial discussion for how, how this might roll out rather than it just being an idea at this point. So we feel like. It's worth pursuing it to the point where we can have a, a, a more uh informed discussion.
Wasn't there a legal issue around the um foundational grant that funded the library?
I have some information I'd like to present to the board, please.
Okay.
And I'd like you to read it. I have a better description. He's gonna like to search.
Okay, if I read it aloud?
Please.
Okay. Um. To the library, so this is the Shaw Memorial Library trustees. Have done research regarding the use of both the new addition and the basement and the use of the original. Uh. Use of the original, the original library, including the children's room. We are presenting specific documents related to the matter of the library and its usage. Please see below. We've prepared a folder with papers showing that library trustees are in charge of the use of the entire library. We have submitted copies of an October twenty four nineteen ninety nine meeting of the library building committee of the gift. Clearly stating that any use be approved by the trustees. There are copies of selectmen reports and library trustees report. In the nineteen sixty eight town report, there is also a copy. Of the November one nineteen ninety nine special town meeting showing a unanimous vote to accept the gift, including all the stipulations that were included. We've also included a copy of the agreement signed by all three selectmen. If this evidence presented does not answer questions regarding this matter, we request being able to seek the opinion from town council. I'm not gonna read all of it, but it's a summary of the Alden Committee meeting held. On Sunday, October twenty fourth nineteen ninety nine. Um.
The letter was evident.
Okay, if the new basement area is accessible to the, accessible to the outside by sliding glass doors supplemented by windows, it would make that space well ventilated. Bright and possibly serve multiple functions as determined by the library trustees. Uh, town of Plainfield special town meeting minutes, November one nineteen ninety nine. Article one, vote to ratify the board of selectmen's decision to accept from Doris F. Alden a donation of approximately. Two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in appreciated securities for the primary purpose. Of constructing in addition to the Shaw Memorial Library Building. In accordance with and subject to the donor's proposal dated October seven nineteen ninety nine. Modified by a letter of October twenty six nineteen ninety nine. And the revised outline of terms and conditions presented to the board and available to this meeting and on such other terms. As the board may deem advisable from time to time. And the vote was unanimous. From the annual report for the town of Plainfield for the year ending December thirty first nineteen sixty eight. This year has been, has seen the completion of, this is the report of the Shaw Memorial Library. And this year has seen the completion. Of the children's room in the library because of the closing of the school, the school room next to the library. Be- because of the closing of the school, the room next to the library became available. A door was cut through and shelving put up. This work was possible because the trustees had raised and saved. The money for it. The floor shelves are on casters and can be moved back, allowing space for storytelling, movies and games. Much work was done by friends of the library. And then the selectmen's report from the town report nineteen sixty eight. A children's room has been added to the Shaw Memorial Library by converting one of former school rooms for this purpose. In November, a formal dedication ceremony was held. Under the auspices of the friends of the library and the library trustees. Naming the room the M. Arvila Dyer Room in honor of the devoted service given by Mrs. Dyer. Especially on behalf of the children of Plainfield during her thirty seven years as librarian. It is our sincere wish that this room will bring Miss, Mrs. Dyer and the children many happy hours during coming years. And then from Doris F. Alden, attorney at law. Uh, do you want me to read this whole letter? It looks a bit, I mean.
It, it stands basically, I, I think what you're looking at.
Oh, I see you've been here for the longest. The project subject to mod, this is the outline of terms and conditions of the gift that was accepted at the town meeting. The project subject to modification as provided below would consist of an addition to the town library. I contemplate that this would consist of two main rooms downstairs and. An upstairs room and full basement. Auxiliary rooms such as bathrooms and possibly a stair chair or other. Means to assist handicapped persons to the second floor if required by law is also contemplated. The fund and earnings therein would be expended towards such project in terms of the basic construction excluding furnishings and books. I would hope that others would contribute to furnishings and. Uh, equipment for the new space to the extent both architecturally and financially feasible within the budget for the project. I would not be adverse to work involving supplemental foundation drainage and basement work to the existing building, including town offices. So as to make the building basement secure, less damp and more functional. There may also be funds available to grant or matching sources to assist the project. If the fund is inadequate, is inadequate to. If the fund is inadequate, is inadequate to fully complete the project, then it would carry the project. Then it would carry the project so that at least all exterior structural and systems work was completed and as much of the interior finish work as possible was also completed. Town resources or other donations would have to be used for completion. To the extent the fund is not completed after completion of the project, the excess could be applied to construction of interior shelving, bookcases and library-related equipment. That was nineteen ninety-nine. That was. October twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-nine, and the date of the, yeah, it's all the same day.
So to me, it sounds like the basement is part of the library. According to that.
So is the children's. If that's not, if that's not acceptable, we would like to have these of town council, please.
In black and white, right on a paper.
Is that what you wanted me to read? Great, okay. So, yeah, I think.
Thank you.
I think that's pretty clear. Do you want a copy of all this, Peter?
No, it's not necessary. My conversation with Chris Metcalf was that the basement was gonna be a basement until he talked to Doris and they excavated around to get the windows and the doors in there so that it could become useful as a, uh, a future space for use. And I guess the trustees have control of that space, but I don't think it necessarily precludes it being used for use of it, that's uh, the library. It just means that the library firmly for these seven. Or gift, uh, and the use of for the town since we've maintained the building for all these years, to work out a relationship for uh, an alternate use, if it's not being, if, if it's currently underutilized.
Well, I think that that's probably a conversation with the library trustees first, since they currently have control of the space.
Exactly, and this whole project started because I had that conversation and they agreed to it. So that's why I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place because they've changed their position.
So what was written, I just proves that what Doris had intended was that the library as a new addition.
No, what, um, give me a moment. I've just gotta see your moment. Can I?
Polly, eleven wins are out. I, I'd just like to ask the trustees what their intention is for that space if it's just gonna remain a basement and unused in any way?
Well, we use it for annual book sale.
We use it, yeah.
For the annual books.
Yeah, I have a few other things.
There's no heat in it.
There's no heat.
There's no heat?
So.
There's only one little.
My understanding is that you won't come to the town and ask for funds to make it a space.
No, we have something to promise that.
Yeah.
Or at least this.
What it said in, in the letter was that you had to fundraise to make. Anything beyond, beyond the annual book sale.
No, I think it said that if the gift was insufficient to complete work, then you'd have to look for other gifts. Not that it was, it had to be book sale, because the book sale didn't exist in there.
No, I don't think they use the book sales for anything in the basement anyway. That's not what I'm saying.
No, they use the basement for the book sale.
Yeah.
That is a fundraising.
Yeah, so I was just wondering if there would be any use for the space beyond the books and books here.
They can use it for whatever they want.
Yeah.
I have some experience with gifts and, and this is, this is not an unusual situation where a prominent, respected, beloved donor had their riches fulfilled by giving money to the town and entrusting a trusted group, the library trustees, to honor their wishes. And many gifts expire, you know, go on and on and on for hundreds of years and life changes over those hundreds of years. Community needs change over those hundreds of years. So I think what we have here is is a situation where I think there's little question that the town offices are very, um, challenging to work in, have impacted our ability to I'll, I'll speak in an I statement, like there's zero privacy in that space.
Yeah.
Cannot transact any public business with privacy. Um, there, and technologically, we're, we're, we continue to be limited to transact private business and.
Not to mention the double effort test.
So I think we need a solution for town offices. I think our Buildings Committee is reasonably exploring all of the
local options, including space in that building that's under U L S. Yeah.
And, you know, I also knew Doris Alden. I knew her to be an attorney. She was very smart in how she worded that gift. I think if she were alive today, she would also come to this conversation with curiosity and an interest to make sure the community's needs were met, both the library and the town that she gifted the funds to. So I, I think that nothing's set in stone with a gift, but it, it, it won't work to go to town council right now. What has to happen is a common agreement between the parties occupying the building and the committee that's in charge of the buildings to seek a solution.
Yeah.
Don't spend town council money arbitrating a sort of petty grievance at this point.
My understanding about restricted gifts from thirty-five years and higher end fundraising is that if you want to change the purpose, so let's say, uh, an example, MIT used to have a a nutrition department. Well, that department went away a long time ago. But it had an endowment. And they wanted to use that endowment for other purposes and they had to go to a judge to get a judge to approve it. And it was a long legal process. It's not something that happens easily unless all the parties, the successive parties involved agree. So I, I agree with what you're saying.
We should, we should keep this in town. And if it can't be resolved, then we need a different solution for the town offices.
You're making up different solutions.
Well, I am because I'm sort of tired of circular conversations.
You have a little building out behind the library. You move a million dollars to the ball field, and then you make a parking lot in between both buildings, and then that next.
It won't probably cost any more though, or not much more than wait for cost to.
But having a one-floor building with all kinds of stuff in it is ideal. And if we could, you know, get taxpayers to pay for a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar fire chart, we might be able to get us a little building.
What we've got to do is get, um, Lindsay Sabadosa and Goby and a few other people to help us get one of those um, multi-million dollar grants to build a new town community center as coming to God, as other towns have got.
Those were federal funds to the state, to the parents.
Yeah. Oh, well, we can be sure that those are going away. Go ahead.
The town should be looking for a bigger piece of property for town offices in this couple places, Long Main Street. As possible. Cause the ball. With Roger Aitchison. And have plenty of local parking, make a good meeting room for all the town offices. Up back with a big swamp. You put big town office, don't have, I don't think you could accept the system here. Big enough to handle.
Well, I think we're not gonna solve this problem tonight. Yeah.
Don't work for ten years or fifteen years. Don't work for three.
Any other questions? Oh, one more thing.
I have one more.
K P Law. Pays bill of eight-hundred-ninety-nine dollars and eleven cents.
I remember that we, uh, paid the, paid K P Law go.
David.
I, I have one more thing.
Um, and I'm supposed to be on the agenda. Did Shannon get me on broadband?
No, but you, you can.
Okay, I asked.
Go ahead.
So I have a brief, um, mid-year, well, just quick, couple of things and then a more significant problem which is solved, but I want to report it to you.
Cause what good point to do first.
You're on the MLP board. I'm talking to you as the MLP board now. So uh, just quick update. I still have to reconcile with Paula our retained earnings, but in general, um, fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. Our revenue, the revenue slightly exceeded my estimates. The expenses were under budget. I believe I have forty-six thousand in retained earnings for last fiscal year, which is about half of the year before, but about the same as the prior year before that. So we're going up and down. And then triggers to what makes that go so big and and that, that goes up and down are our repair their costs, which you've heard me talk about. So Paula and I will, will get our pennies in order, because we like to balance our records to the penny, but that's the order of magnitude. I will, I will be asking you next year to um, improve my recommendation that that goes to top. The stable. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about the expenses, which were ninety-six thousand dollars. The, that was the one line item in my expense budget that went over. I had estimated eighty-two thousand. And I've been doing a deep analysis on those. They're, they come in every month. Uh, and I've just lumped them into, what is that ninety-six thousand? Just for your awareness. Um, thirty K of that, so about a third of that is proactive preventive maintenance. So I do that every year with Whip City, looking around in the spring at what old winter damage happened, work all summer to fix it and prepare ourselves for the next stormy. Nineteen thousand was the October brush fire on Summit Street. Twenty-two thousand was the February ice storm. And then another twenty-five thousand is miscellaneous stuff, trees falling, different random times, people snowballing up their underground drops. Blabbering, blabbering, blah. So high expense here, I will be projecting that level going forward, just to be cautious. So that's where we ended. I'll give you a more detailed, um, report mid-year and January as we get six months of this year under. The other big issue that I had brought to your attention was our concern about the broadband plant insurance. I had been forecasting to you that the premiums were going to go up by at least twenty-five percent. The deductible was gonna go up a hundred thousand dollars. I worked with our area regional, uh, regions MLP managers, my counterparts in twenty other towns to try to see if there were other carrier options. Um, and we, uh, we uncovered some, including the Public Utilities Risk Management Program, PERMA, which serves all bigger gas, electric and other public utilities. They actually gave us a very competitive quote, including their annual membership fee. Um, but I leveraged that quote with Paula's help and our agent at Cabot to get, um, more than our existing quote from Hanover. And we were able to find a policy through MEA, so we didn't move to PERMA, we stayed with MEA, which is the Mass Interlocal Insurance Association. We were able to get a new carrier, Acadia, at a fifty-four-hundred-dollar premium as compared to Hanover at ninety-one-hundred. So a much lower annual premium and they stayed with a ten K deductible. So we bound that. Um, we're, we're with them till next July. I expect next July, we're gonna face the same kind of pressure. Uh, because these storms are doing this kind of damage to us. We did not file insurance claims, but other towns are filing claims. So I would like to, um, I am continuing conversations with my regional counterparts to to look at what self-insurance looks like for our region, which you've heard me talk about before, which is instead of paying this annual premium and not ever fighting claims, because we're afraid that costs will go up, take the money that we would pay for a premium, just cool it so that we can self-insure. That's a form of regionalization. We may or may not want to do that, but we could even do that on our own.
Yeah, because solo town.
So that's under discussion and I'm, I'm, we'll report back to you. Now, the, the bad news, which is solved, but in July, on July eleventh, I received a formal um, notice of probable violation from the Department of Public Utilities pertaining to a DigSafe violation in town. Um, it was a surprise to me. I had never navigated a DigSafe violation before. I immediately contacted Whip City Fiber, network operator and internet service provider. Before I contacted them, though, I dug around in our, we have a big database of all the drops in town. And I discovered that there was a DigSafe violation on private property where a contractor had done their due diligence, called DigSafe. And when they dug where DigSafe had flagged it, they hit underground fiber and pulled up their whole drop. Um, they did what they were required to do, which was notify DigSafe, notify Whip City Fiber. Whip City Fiber did what they were required to do, to notify DPU. Um, I further discovered that the reason that error occurred was that the maps of the as-built of our network, which we have updated every six months, because every six months there's new drops, new underground. Um, the last update had not gone through the national system. And the company that we all pay nationally, um, to maintain this data took responsibility for the mapping here. So.
Don't they have to pay the fine?
They, so, no. Uh, the, the rigor of the Massachusetts DB, DPU, and remember they're, they're overseeing all public utilities, gas, electric, big explosions outside Boston that, you know, caused many, many people's houses to burn. They're very focused on those big, big violations. And they're very aggressive in enforcement of any provision. And so what I have learned through calm many, many hours with Whip City Fiber, Whip City Fiber's council, D U's council, is that DPU has no mechanism for the town-owned broadband utilities. I should have notified the department manager of this violation.
You should have been notified.
I didn't know to notify them because everyone else who was in the mix notified them. And nobody notified me. So on record, my department has the risk map. I get to go to a day-long training on DPU to get the fine waived. And the lawyers for DPU trying to figure out a mechanism to update the regulation to account for the fact that all of these towns that hire professional network operators are in the hot seat and there needs to be a way to prevent what we just have for all of them. That way, obviously, is what City tells us if there's a violation. And that's gonna happen automatically. But regulatorily, there is no way out of the fine. So I've used the one, you get one get out of jail free card. It's happened to us. I'm getting us out of jail from the fine by attending the training. I've learned a lot about this, which makes me respect DPU, but get mad at the mapper. And, um, Judy, I've kept you abreast of this all along, over the last weeks, but I just wanted you all to know
Yeah.
that this occurred and we will carry on. I'll keep you informed of the regulation changes that I'm going after next.
Next time, you're not gonna get out of jail free. You're gonna get directly to jail.
I was able to negotiate that this is to the department, not to the town. So that if anything happens with the department, they can have their own get out of jail free card. they can have their own get out of jail free card.
Oh, that's good, okay.
So that was a win.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions.
Stand.
I have one last thing that I would like to, um, just mention to you guys, since we're all in this together. So for this all boards and committees meeting, I would like to propose that we sample two of them at the same time, uh, two of them at at this time. One in October and one in March, because I think we should start institutionalizing or regularizing, regularizing. It would be up to a year at six-month intervals. One is in the fall, as you're coming into budget season, one is in the spring, as you're coming out of budget season, so that we can sort of be sharing with people what we're working on. I would like to propose for this year, October sixth, twenty-twenty-five and March second, twenty-twenty-six. Those are both Monday nights, I believe. And I just, I didn't want to schedule anything.
Right.
Yeah. I will let you know, are, are Monday nights bad for you, huh? Oh. Um, I know that October sixth is. Yeah, October sixth is the first Monday in October. And then, um, March second is the first Monday in March. Okay.
What time?
You hear that? Um, in the past, we've done it from six-thirty to eight.
Eight to eight-thirty.
Six-thirty to eight, does that work, Rob?
That works great.
I was hoping we could get this done tonight. Oh, and says.
I saw you had some deal.
She has now, she's done tomorrow.
And that's you have to sign them in both.
These are the warrants for you, Ed.
Any other questions?
I move you adjourned.
All favor.
I appreciate y'all being here.
Thank you.
I was just going to date it with a flower.
But that's true. Hi. Am I, or a thing you want to?
So just. You remember you had some. Different ones getting in. You did? Then we don't have to talk. I'll just. So you had a key somewhere?